All right, welcome everybody to the Mount Mansfield School District Board Meeting on September 11th, 2023, Edie Granting, Board Chair. Now, I'll run through the agenda. Now, the agenda is just to take a moment for September 11th. Just before we do that, if it's okay with everyone, I'd just like to take a moment of silence. So, I know it's a weird day every year and catches me off guard, catches me at weird times. And so if we could just take a moment, then we'll call the meeting, or then we'll run through the agenda. Thank you. All right, so agenda is community comments, appointing one of our vacant seats to bring up former school board member back in. Thank you. Then we have special education and people update presentation from Special Services Director Mary Lundine. We have a monitoring report on the ends policy, citizenry and community debrief on our leadership summit, approving the minutes from the previous meeting, any committee reports, if there were any new meetings. It does not look like there were any new meetings since the last one. And then if there's any other business, and we'll talk about the next meeting in September. Any modifications or changes to the minutes?
Can be really quick, yeah, the committee did need almost 16 of those minutes were submitted, but they're not reflected here.
Okay, great, so we'll catch that when we get to that. Thank you. Okay, so roll call, and Pat is gonna do minutes from the reporting. So Ethan has volunteered, has been voluntold to do roll call for us, I appreciate that Ethan, thank you.
You bet, are we ready? Allison Conan.
This might work. I'm here.
Heather Chadwick.
Here.
Kevin Campbell.
Here.
Lisa Pollak.
Here.
Tara Armison.
Brendan.
Andrew Pond.
Happy to be here.
Diane Pearson Glipman. Eric Gildemeister.
Here.
Ethan Mauer is here. Gail Conley.
Here.
Katie Nelson.
Here.
Stuart Morjo. And then I also have Molly Billings.
Molly is pretty early in college, and we're gonna move to new minutes.
Okay, so I don't know if everybody heard that, but we are gonna have two new school board reps. And we're working on it with the high school. Yeah, I've already been in touch with Mr. Weston, and that's our admin meeting, and at the summit, and he will be in touch with me in a few weeks. Perfect. Okay, thanks Ethan.
You're welcome.
And Allison's here.
Did you start with Alice? Maybe, I couldn't hear the first person.
I tried, sorry Allison, it was lost in translation, sorry Allison.
That makes sense, I just want
All right, great, thank you. We are not ready for a land acknowledgement yet, but we keep it on the agenda to remind ourselves that we're working toward that, we're working on coming up with what is the best way to acknowledge where we are and be true to who we are at the same time. And we noticed the new art order in the foyer of the high school that includes a version of a land acknowledgement, and it looks really beautiful. Awesome, yeah. Community comments, is there anyone from the community here to comment, to share any comments with the board? Okay. Our next agenda item is to appoint Susan Lilich to the Mount Mansfield School Board to fill the open Jericho position. Susan is here, she was formerly the Board Chair for the Jericho Elementary School Board, back when there was a Jericho Elementary School Board. How long were you there, like 10 years? It's a long time.
Well, it was a long time ago, and I'm a little fuzzy, and when I, I mean, when I remember how many years before the version, I'm gonna
and Do you want to share anything, or do you want me to just share about you? Susan has two kids who both graduated from the school district. She is a clinical psychologist, yeah, and works in the area. And we're really excited to have her back. We are, we have a tentative approval, sets flash, that's what I'm looking for, Andrew. Devotion, deferral consent from the select board, who will do an official approval at their next select board meeting, Jericho. So we don't need to vote, right, it's all done, we just have to approve. We have to go.
I think you would want to do a motion for appointment.
Okay.
No, we'll make a motion.
Great, and can I get a second? Thanks Alice, I'm all in, any discussion, any questions, any?
I'm just gonna change my feelings, but I'm curious about, well, how much of the time is left for those two?
So it's a really good question, because it doesn't matter. When you get appointed many year, you only serve until the next election.
Oh, okay.
And then you have to get elected. So as someone who originally got on the school board through one of those, I had to get elected, and then elected again the next year, and then elected again the next year, because that was right after we merged, so three years in a row, I had to, it was lovely.
So, a lot of signatures for this. Saturday, they have to go around, get your signatures, too, like one oh, yes, and then one year, sign it.
So till January, so we have to give her incentive to run again. Any other discussions? All in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, unanimous approval, you get to join us down here. Thanks, thank you, we're really excited to have you back. Mary, would you like to share with us what's going on with the preschool and special ed in the district?
Hi, everyone. So I'm going to start. Edie, do you have my PowerPoint, or do you need me to share my screen, what would you like me to do?
Questions, sure. It's very attached to the agenda, we have it here, and so Jeff can run it.
Okay. So I'm going to just start with a review of our child count data. And what that is, is every December 1st, the school districts in Vermont need to report to the AOE on the number of students that are eligible for special education in the district. So I have, in this slide, I've looked at the last five years. So I don't have the data for this year yet, I have rough numbers, but I won't be reporting this year's data until December 1st. So, so if you look at our data, we're pretty consistent, which is a good thing, and essentially what it means is we're not over identifying, we're not under identifying. Last December, we had 394 students eligible for special education, and so that's looking pre-K all the way through age 22. The breakdown with this data is we have about 30 students at the pre-K level. Our elementary number was around 135, our middle school was 103, and the high school was 123. So you can see it's pretty evenly distributed across the district. This year, our data is showing about a 10 student increase over our numbers from last December, but that could change again by the time I report out on December 1st, because students are going through reevals, other students are being referred, so we're always in an evaluation process. The other thing that I wanted to share, just looking at this child count data, is people often wonder about disability categories, and what does that look like in our district? So there are 13 disability categories that we look at for eligibility. The five that where most of our numbers are in this district is autism spectrum disorder, developmental disability, so that's for our three to five-year-olds, an emotional disturbance, other health impairment, and typically things that would fall in that category might be if someone has a diagnosis of attention deficit disorder, or like Tourette's syndrome, or something to that effect. And then the fifth category where we see most of our numbers is specific learning disability. And a student can have a specific learning disability in reading, in math, in written expression. Sometimes we see it in listening comprehension. So as I looked at our numbers in those categories, what I'm always doing is looking to see is there one particular category of eligibility where I might see that numbers are rising more than in other categories. And what I said to John is, we're pretty stable. I'm not seeing any sharp increases or decreases in those five disability categories. The only one that ticked up a little bit was emotional disability, from, from the 21-22 school year to the 22-23 school year, we saw an increase of 13 students. And so that's always something that we pay attention to. The state of Vermont has been identified as having very high numbers in the category of emotional disabilities. So it's something that the feds are always watching. We don't know why, sometimes I think it's because we're putting anxiety and depression as two areas, we, we often will put that under the emotional disability category, whereas in other states, they may put it under other health impairment, so that's one thing that people are looking at. Okay, so I'm gonna move to the next slide. And this one, what I just wanted to show you again was just the percentage of students eligible for special ed. So looking at our total student enrollment, and then the number of students who are eligible for special education services, you can see for three years there, from 2018 to 2021, we were pretty stable. We took a little dip in 21-22, that was when we were in the thick of the pandemic, and we had hybrid learning going on. There were families who were not requesting evaluations at that time, like we might typically see in a normal school year. And then last year, as we started to come out of the pandemic, we did see an increase in the number of evaluations and students becoming eligible. Again, looking at what was the category, there were more students qualifying under emotional disability due to anxiety and depression. And we were also seeing specific learning disability. What was hard to tease out is with the pandemic, students weren't receiving instruction. And so trying to tease out what could be lack of instruction, because it was pared back versus what was true disability. So that's probably gonna take us another round of evaluations to see how that plays out. Next slide, Jeff. So this is a look at six years of our out-of-district placements, and I just wanted to go over with you just a little bit, so you understand how IEP teams arrive at this decision. So the federal special ed law, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, has a guiding principle in there, that students must be educated in the least restrictive environment. And so sometimes you may hear people use the acronym LRE, Continuum of Services. When IDEA was written back in 1974, the goal of Congress was to open the doors of public education to all students, including students who had disabilities. Because up until that point, they were not being educated in the public schools. And so one of the guiding principles of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is that children would attend the school that they would attend if they did not have a disability. And so what IEP teams have to do is, as part of the process, is you always have to think about the general education classroom when you're thinking about a student with a disability. And then you move along what's called a continuum, so you're looking at that child's specific needs. They may need a quieter space, they may need some adult support. And sometimes the general ed classroom is not the place where they're going to be able to access their learning. And so if a student is spending more time needing breaks and needing to be in a quieter space than they are in the general education classroom, the IEP team is required to ask the question, is the general ed classroom, is the public school the least restrictive environment for that student, is that where they are able to get an education and access their learning? And, and there are times where it's not, and it could be that a student needs a therapeutic component, which some of the out-of-district placements can offer, where they can really work on self-regulation, and they provide therapy throughout the day in terms of group therapy, individual therapy. And so in summary, what I'm saying is, these decisions are not decisions that we make lightly. And it really is a discussion, it's based on data. And we try everything we can to keep kids in the public school. So if you look at our data, you don't see any huge spikes from year to year. Last year, we did have some students graduate, which is always wonderful when our students stay in programs and, and do not drop out, because we don't want students dropping out. So we had three students graduate, we had a student move out of district, and then we had another student who reintegrated back into the mainstream setting. And that's always a goal that we're working on as well, when students are out of district. So that just shows you six years. You can see, it always seems like you have more students at the high school level than you do at the elementary and middle. That's something you would see across the state, and that's pretty typical nationally as well. Next slide. So this is just some things that, that we always pay attention to when we're thinking about the special education budget, and what's really driving the cost of the budget. And we are seeing that there are lots of students who have more mental health needs than what we've seen in the past. And because the mental health budgets at the state, and even our, our local mental health agency with their staffing shortages, and some of their budget cuts, things can sometimes fall to the schools. So that's always something that we're paying attention to. The out-of-district tuition costs continue to go up. So we're always seeing that there's at least a 3% to 5% increase if we have students in an out-of-district placement. And if there's any associated transportation cost. But we pretty much can take care of that with our vans, so we're not seeing extraordinary transportation cost. The contracted services with outside providers, what, that would typically be if you need a behavior interventionist, someone who has more expertise than what a para educator might have to work with a student who has autism, or has an emotional disability, and really needs someone just queuing them, helping them navigate social situations throughout the day, helping them to self-regulate their emotions. So those contracted services can be pretty expensive. And again, those costs have been increasing over the years. And then personnel to deliver specialized instruction and related service. So if we have more need in the schools, then we sometimes need to hire more staff to make sure that we're delivering the services.
I just wanna pause, does anybody have any questions so far, just for Allison?
Can you talk about, for folks who are students who are leaving the district for services? What are some examples of where they're going, what are the schools or programs or institutions that are not there?
Sure, so some of the out-of-district placements in Chittingen County, that we have a school called Belkate that's located in Essex. And they typically serve students who are in 7th grade, 7th through 12th grade. And they primarily serve students with autism and emotional disabilities. We have, we did have a school, and you may have seen the article in the seven days, I think it was last week or the week prior, that was run through NFI, which is a mental health partner with the Howard Center. And they ran a program called CenterPoint, and that was for students who are high school age. And CenterPoint closed due to budget, just budget constraints, and Howard Center decided to no longer offer that program. So the South Burlington School District is now overseeing, or essentially took the CenterPoint framework, and is making it part of the South Burlington School District. So they will have five slots available if any surrounding districts in Franklin or Chittingen County need a slot. There's also the Baird School, which is affiliated with the Howard Center. There's the Jean Garvin School, which is a consortium between all of the Chittingen County school districts, and so we serve on the board, and the Howard Center acts as the fiduciary for us, hires the staff. And they offer individualized programs as well as a group milieu. So those are just some of the schools, and then there's another one in Winuski called the Mill School. And that program serves students middle school, high school age. Same thing, they will work with students with emotional disabilities, they'll work with students who are on the autism spectrum.
Yep, another question, you had mentioned a couple of slides that there was, we had had one student that dropped out. Is dropping out an issue, and like, do you have numbers on that, or is it higher?
No, we didn't, we did not have a student drop out, we had a student move, move out of district.
Sorry, I missed her. Tara?
Mary, you were talking about how you have more students that are qualifying. Is it, do you see like a certain age or grade, is it all like across the gamut? Or, or were like those 13? Did you say there were 13 more, something?
Yeah, there was there was an increase of 13 students in the disability category of emotional disturbance. And again, I think a lot of that is related to the pandemic. We're definitely seeing more students who have diagnoses of anxiety and depression, and these are coming from pediatricians. And so when a family notifies us that a pediatrician has diagnosed their child with anxiety or depression, and it, we have to do a special ed eval to consider part of our child find whether or not that student has a disability under IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So there are some students that are qualifying, other students may have anxiety or depression, but if it's not impacting them and their learning, then they might be eligible for a 504 plan, which means that they would have accommodations. So for example, if they just needed a break, if they felt like they were getting anxious, and they just needed to take a walk to get a drink, that would be an accommodation versus a student eligible for special ed who needs specialized instruction, working with a professional on an essential skill. So that's the difference.
Great, but is it, is it, did you see it in one age category or one grade, or is it everything from kindergarten to, you know, preschool?
Yeah, we were seeing the ED more, the emotional disturbance, more at the middle school, high school level than the elementary level. What we were seeing at the elementary was more in terms of specific learning disability, particularly in the area of reading. So that was something that was really hard to tease apart. Was it the impact of the pandemic and the hybrid learning? Or were there some things going on where students truly did have a reading disability? So it, it's hard, and I think everybody's having a hard time teasing that apart because of the pandemic, it's not something we've had to deal with before.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm looking at the next slide, which is just some of the current challenges, and, and I think this is nothing new, I'm sure that we talked about this last year too, that there is a staffing shortage with our contracted service providers. So contracted service providers would be our local mental health agency. So we partner with the Howard Center, and we contract with them for some services to help with students who have pretty significant autism, or pretty significant emotional disturbance. And we've had BIs and board certified behavior analysts, and we've had a lot of those sorts of supports that we've relied on from them to help us. And they are experiencing significant staffing shortages, so we do not have the number of BIs that typically we had in the past. And so what we're really trying to do is just build our capacity within, because it's been like this for two years, and it doesn't seem to be getting any better. And even some of the private companies, like Green Mountain Behavior Associates, SD Associates, they also are experiencing staffing shortages, so it's just something that everybody's seeing. We also feel very fortunate, the second bullet, I actually feel very fortunate, and I, and John and I were talking about this this morning, that we only have one professional position for special ed that we weren't able to fill this year. And that was a speech-language pathologist at the middle school. And that was a speech language pathologist at the middle school. We have filled all of our special ed positions. So we hired nine new special educators this year. Which is amazing when I look at my colleagues across the state who still have many openings. So people want to work in our district and that's great news. And we feel very, very fortunate to be fully staffed with our professionals. We're still advertising for some para positions. Those are definitely harder to fill. But again, I don't think we are as in like the position that some of my colleagues are in. I said, I mentioned this earlier that in Vermont, we are seeing an increase of students who have a diagnosis of developmental trauma and challenging behaviors. So some of it, as we go through and we look at the reports, is definitely tied to the opioid crisis that we all experienced back in, you know, ten, five, 10 years ago. So we definitely see that. And we have partnered with Dr. Joelle Van Lent for the last six or seven years. She was working with the district before I came. And so what we've done with her is she's done a lot of professional development with our staff. So that people understand what is developmental trauma. Help me understand what would be going on with a child who has that. And how do we create learning environments that support children who have developmental trauma and challenging behaviors? What are we doing to make them feel safe? And how do we build relationships? At the same time, how do adults take care of each other? Because it's challenging work. So it's been wonderful having her. And she also works with us as we look at case studies that may be tricky. And we problem solve together and think about how we can wrap around that student and their family. Okay, any questions there? Okay, the next slide. This, I know I've talked to all of you about before this. This is just a reminder that Act 173 was implemented July 1st, 2022. And that now we are in a reimbursement model for special education. Or I'm sorry, a census block model, no longer a reimbursement model. And the purpose of Act 173 was for schools to really look at their systems. And to make sure that we were meeting the needs of all struggling learners. And that's where MTSS came in, multi-tiered systems of support. So looking at what was happening for all students in our schools in terms of our curriculum, our assessments, our supports. And then how would we serve students who might need a little extra? And then what if they were really struggling? How would we use interventionist and other specialists in our schools to use some evidence-based practices and approaches to help students really get an intensive remediation? And then special education fits into MTSS outside of the three tiers. So students who have IEPs and needs that are unique to them would be served by special ed in addition to the three tiers that are happening in general education. So the cost of special ed is always tied to general ed. And we always have to look at what's happening in general education because that informs what's happening in special education. And this is just a slide, just really talking about the benefits of having a multi-tiered system of support. And one of the guiding hallmarks of MTSS is universal design for learning. So really looking at how do we design general education, our learning environments? Thinking about the needs of all students. And making sure that all students receive high quality first instruction from their classroom teacher. And that students are not being pulled out of the classroom for remediation or for, or for special ed services during core instruction. We want all students to be in the classroom during core instruction, getting that instruction from their classroom teacher. And then the, the big emphasis on multi-tiered systems of support is really looking at our core curriculum and making sure that it's evidence-based. So looking at programs such as, or approaches such as Orton Gillingham. That, there's a lot of research for Orton Gillingham, for the Wilson Program, the Science of Reading, that shows that that's really how students learn how to read. It's developmentally appropriate. The brain research supports that. And so making sure that what we're doing is aligned to all of that research.
We have a question over here.
Hey, Mary. It's Kevin. I might have a couple of questions. That's okay with the chair, but on that, going back to the Act 173 for just a minute. Your bullet says that the act is intended to build capacity. What, what does that mean to you and our district? And the second part of Act 173 is having now gone through a year. Curious, did our, did our district get, you know, realize the benefits of Act 173? How did we do from a financial perspective compared to loan spend compared to block grant? Or is it too early to tell?
So yes, those are great questions. So Act 173 was intended to build capacity and efficiency within the system to address all struggling learners. And so when you look at what was the document that was being looked at by our legislators as, as 173 was being written? And there's something called the DMG report. If you're interested in reading that, I can certainly share that with you later. And what that was, they did a study of 11 school districts in Vermont. And what they were doing is they were looking at what did instruction look like in those buildings? How were staff being used? And so what they saw is that a lot of students who were struggling were not being served in the classroom by their classroom teacher, but rather were working with paras or were receiving services outside of the core instruction time. And so when we talk about building capacity, what that means is that teachers are getting the professional development that they need so that they can work with all students, including students who struggle. So the way 173 and the DMG report defined that was students who were reading below grade level. English language learners. So those are some students who would be struggling. And so how do we give our classroom teachers the, the skills necessary to work with students who are struggling? Learning how to differentiate, learning how to accommodate, using some of the evidence-based practices. So when we look at Mount Mansfield, Andrew and I have worked really hard over the last two years with our coaches. And so what we have done is we've looked at our scope and sequence for ELA, English Language Arts. And we've also looked at math. And what we've done is the standards for English Language Arts and for math at the elementary and the middle levels. The, the teachers had a voice in this. And we looked at the Common Core State Standards and said, what are the critical standards that we would expect students to know? When, at the end of a grade? And so we've called those benchmark understandings. And we also talked about what would the learning target be? So that all teachers know what's the goal for that standard? That every student should be able to do that. So we've done that work and we have those benchmark understandings, those learning targets, and those common assessments aligned pre-K to eight. And so everybody knows this is what we're doing. And so for, for ELA, at the pre-K four level, we have adopted a program called Hegarty. And it is focusing on phonological awareness. So in that regard, we are building capacity for our pre-K two classroom teachers. Phonological awareness is a foundational skill that kids need to be able to read. And so all of the teachers have the materials. They had the training in, in service so that they know how to use them. And now the expectation is, is that that is part of the early literacy, literacy block that would be happening at pre-K two. We also adopted a phonics program that's aligned to the science of reading. And so again, really looking at the brain research and how do students learn how to read? Looking at a developmental approach. Those standards and those learning targets are all aligned. And we have a phonics program that is research-based and it's called Ufly. It's out of the University of Florida. And so teachers have been introduced to that. And what our reading coach is going to be doing with the pre-K four folks is with some of our early releases and as she's getting into buildings and meeting with people, they will start to look at that and how do you break some of those skills down and, and make that part of the lesson? So that's going to be a focus this year is really helping them with that. So it's ongoing and there's, there's different pieces that are going to have to happen as we're building capacity and really using our staff efficiently. And it's big systems change. 173 was, was very big systems change. And so typically, when you make a change that big, it takes about seven years before you're really going to see if things paid off. And so we're still early with that, but we feel really good about the work that we've done and what we've put in place. And again, looking at some of our colleagues. We're a little further ahead in this work than some other districts. Did that answer your question, Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay.
The last part about how did we do with the block grant?
Oh, okay. So, so we were not in the red last year. And we, we did well. We, kids got what they needed. IEP teams were making those decisions. And so if a student needed something that the IEP decided was, or the IEP team decided was necessary, then that was provided to the student. And so we stayed within budget. And that's, for me, that's good news, especially moving into a census block the first year because I wasn't sure how that was going to work. Okay. I'm just, okay, I think I talked about everything there. So, so the other big change that came this summer. And again, all of this is part of 173, even though the special ed rules are outside of that. These rule changes happened because when 173 went into effect, the State Board of Ed needed to open the special ed rules to change the finance rules. And so whenever you open the special ed rules, all the rules are open. And so there was advocacy to look at some of the ways that we determine specific learning disability, looking at adverse effect, which is also criteria that we use to qualify students for special ed and functional performance. So these were supposed to go into effect in July 2022. But they were delayed because schools were not ready to implement these last year. And so we spent last school year doing a lot of professional development to really understand what did these changes mean? And what were we going to have to do as a system to be able to implement them? So they did go into effect July 1st and we spent August 29th. I spent that morning with the special ed staff and we went over these. And so things have, so far, things have been going smoothly with these changes. We will not know the impact of the changes as far as numbers of students who will be eligible. We probably won't know that till the end of the school year as we go through a cycle of doing evaluations. So the next slide explains a little bit about specific learning disability. Vermont, what Vermont used to do is we would use what was called a discrepancy model. And so you would look at a student's IQ or their cognitive score. And you would look at their achievement scores in either reading, math, written expression, listening comp. And you would look for a discrepancy of 22 points or more between those two scores. And so we have been using that model since the nineties. And Vermont was one of the last few states to continue to use this model. And some people have referred to it as the wait to fail model. So when the rules opened, this was one where people were advocating that Vermont changed their practices and get in line with the rest of the country and what the federal regs recommended. And so that's what we've done. And so now we are using what's called patterns of strength and weaknesses, where our psychologists will really look at cognitive profiles. They'll look at, you know, some of the executive functioning skills. And then they're also going to be looking at the data that will come in from the classroom teachers, the interventionist, and looking at how does a student respond to an evidence-based practice? And all of that data will be discussed by the eligibility team to determine whether or not the student has a specific learning disability. So our psychologists trained all last year in patterns of strength and weaknesses. So they are well-versed in how to do that. And we have spent a lot of time, like I shared earlier, just with our MTSS and getting all of our standards and our learning targets, our benchmarks, understandings, and our common assessments in place. So that's everything that we'll be using. And if you're curious about what those guidelines are, there's a link right there. You can look at what the agency has put together. Next slide, Jeff. So adverse effect, you may have heard about this when you've just been talking with different people in the community. This is the second criteria that a student had to meet to be eligible for special ed. And Vermont, in the early nineties, Vermont had added a lot of language and a lot of parameters to adverse effect, which was more than what the federal regs required us to do. And so in Vermont, we had to show three out of six data points. We had to show that students were at the bottom 15th percentile in a basic skill. And now adverse effect is not required for students who have, when we're answering the question of specific learning disability. question of specific learning disability or for the category of deaf-blindness. And now we'll only have to use two data points versus three out of six, so two. And we will really look at what's happening with that student. Are they below grade level? Has it been over a period of time? Looking at the data that's coming from the classroom. And then we'll also be looking at functional skills. Next slide. And functional performance is one more piece that's brand new, and this fits into adverse effect. What that means is really looking at just, the easiest way I can explain it to you is like you would look at how is a student doing with self-regulation? How are they doing with organization? How are they doing in social situations? And we have to tie all of this back to the disability category to show that there's a direct link. And then if the student is showing that the disability is impacting them in the area of functional performance, that's an area that the IEP can now address. So that's new. Okay, next. So what this means in a nutshell, those rule changes for our school district is that we're using a hybrid approach. So we're going to be using patterns of strength and weaknesses, which is that cognitive profile. We will be using all of our academic data and looking at how kids are responding to evidence-based practices and programs. And we will continue to work on systematizing our EST and figuring out how that fits into MTSS. EST is a Vermont thing, so we're all, all school districts, we're all trying to figure out how that fits in. We will continue to work on tier three, which is intensive remediation for students who are struggling and how our interventionist will serve those students. And then special education, how tier three referrals to special ed will be happening. And we're continuing to implement our common assessments and universal screeners across the district. So we have universal screeners this year, our common assessment plan, we have benchmarks that we'll be doing, and that's all data that our professional learning communities can look at that will give us information for students and help us answer the question if they are referred to special ed, whether or not they have a specific learning disability. Okay, we're almost done. So if we're ready, I'll move into pre-K. I just wanted to show you just on this slide, the breakdown of some of our pre-K classrooms across the district. So we have one classroom at Brewster Pierce and we have sixteen students enrolled. And we have three classrooms at RES with forty-nine students enrolled. Underhill ID has two classrooms with thirty-one students enrolled and Smiley has one classroom with seventeen students enrolled. And I did add, under each classroom, just the number of students who did not get a spot in our public pre-K. So at Brewster Pierce, we had seven three-year-olds who did not get a public pre-K spot. At RES, we had nine three-year-olds who did not get a public pre-K slot. UID, seven students did not. Four of them were four-year-olds and three were three-year-olds. But everyone except for four students did get a slot in a private pre-K program. And those private pre-K programs are partners with us in the Act one sixty-six dollars. And so that, you know, that's pretty good that mostly everybody did get a high-quality pre-K slot. And we have thirty-nine private pre-K partners across the northern part of the state that we work with. Ethan?
Sorry, Mary. When you said, you said UID, I'm thinking you mean UCS, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, UID. We have, we have two classrooms. At UID.
Got it. Yep.
Got it. Thank you. Still a school, Ethan.
We could call it central office.
It's good.
Yeah.
Let's try it.
Go ahead, Mary.
All right.
Don't let us strategy.
Okay. Okay, so any, any other questions about that?
Any other questions about that?
Okay. Oh, yeah, one more question.
I have a question. So Smiley is the only program that did not have excess demand or the, right? How many, how many vacancies are there at Smiley? And I know, like, you don't get into Brewster Pierce, you can go to Smiley, right? Could you just talk a little bit about the capacity of Smiley and a little bit about how that's working?
So we, we have, I hear, this is some echoing.
Some echoing. You're not echoing for us, but.
Okay, all right. Maybe it's just my headphones.
So, yeah, raised from Brewster Pierce, that are at Smiley and Portland Ridge.
Okay. So there's ten that are actually from Bolton that are at Smiley?
Which are.
And how many could you hold at Smiley?
That's, that's.
Yeah, so Smiley, Smiley has seventeen students and seven of them are from two other schools. So they have ten students from Bolton.
Is there an opportunity to increase the number of spots at Smiley? And if, like, if, for instance, there's nine kids at RES that didn't get into the program, is there any opportunity or desire to open up a second classroom? You have more capacity at Smiley or family's not interested in busing over there or?
I don't, I don't know. It's a good question.
You know, it's harder sometimes.
I mean, I think that's the challenge. It's, depends on where you're going, you know? Which way you're working is, is part of it. But I do think it's going to be something that, you know, that we need to look at. Either we're gonna shift some personnel resources or maybe to potentially add some staffing. Because one of the things that's gonna happen is Huntington is gonna have a bigger bubble coming through. And one of the challenges, some of the challenges we have for her, for some of our areas is it's, there is, there are private pre-Ks in the town. And I think, you know, really people would prefer to, to have their students know where they live. Not, not everybody, but some. And we've changed the schedule a little bit so that they're full day now. It's become a lot more attractive to families than we were, than when we had some partial days. So the, the interest in our school-based programs has really gone up. You know, it's best practice for really invest for students, but from the demand has risen. So if I say this, because Act one sixty-six was never supposed to pay the school district was gonna take every school kid. I think the state at the time knew we didn't have the capacity to do that. So it was really supposed to be a partnership between some school-based programs and the high-quality private providers. And like, if you look at the north end, you have Saxon Hill, we have Oak Hill, so there's more capacity there. And even in Richmond, we doubled the capacity of our two. For them to take more students, I think all of that comes into that, that number of the four students, which is really, think about it, because we don't know, maybe these parents didn't, or caregivers didn't say, you know what, just gonna keep my child home. So that's a pretty long number. Get a lot of credit, a lot of, a lot of, pretty passionate, um, because I'm right there. The cheese between the two pieces of bread is that. No, that's not true. What was it?
Your touch.
Oh, yeah.
Even cut out.
So, questions.
Your standard type of summary.
Right. So, yeah, okay, that's your follow-up question, Kevin. Does our district as a whole, we know as a district as a whole, that's enough between public and private to satisfy our requirements, right? How do we know that? Did, did we survey kindergarten parents or, you know, did your, if, if, did you have access to, you know, sufficient pre-K or can we tell somehow our kindergarten, our straight classroom is fighting that we have enough to pass you apart? Well, the data would say we're pretty close. We only have four students that, so we send out a lot of information to parents and anybody that wants to, a spot at a school we know about, and if they don't get in, what I wanted to say, these are preschool coordinators, thank you. Kyle has done a really great job of saying, you know, you know, we don't, we have a finite amount of spots, but you, you know, we're gonna help you find a high-quality pre-K spot. So that's exactly the way Act one sixty-six was supposed to work. That doesn't mean that parents and caregivers wouldn't prefer spot options. But we've been able to make it work for, for just about everybody. And I mentioned part two because we doubled the capacity for care preschool for earliest kids this year.
Do we know how when you're doing compared to other districts in this regard of like preschool?
I don't know that. That's a good question, and I don't know, I haven't seen that data. I'm not sure. Yeah, I know, I don't, I'm not aware, unless it's really, really small this year, that you can, you have every student get, you know, full-day preschool program. I don't know any districts like that, particularly in our region. Right now, we're one of the few that offers a full-day program. But, you know, is it really the right thing to do? Because it's, you can see some of the dividends of the classroom, for sure. And how do, how do you decide how many classes to add? Well, some of it is space and some of it's budget. You know, when you look at Richmond, there's three there, but one part of that is because we got a grain two years back, paid for it for three years at classroom, and we kept that classroom going. Because I don't know if you remember, but we had a thing, two preschools originally were closed a few years back. So there comes down to budget.
Because we're funded at half.
Yes, two, four, six of the, the local preschool.
So we are subsidizing preschool to have it at the public.
And the one, since the six, it's financially better. Point four, six, so. They're, they're very different. They're, they're different. There's a voucher that you get for private pre-K. And then a count of it is part of our, so it's, it's really, it's really pretty different. Again, mention all of one sixty-six, we have, it was clear that, you know, that schools wouldn't be able to meet, have every three, four-year-old in their public school, or most of them now, they're gonna do that, particularly places like, but let's do it. Richmond, or, should we call it, should we, or Richmond, or Richmond, try more than order. But it is gonna come up, the reason I call it, is it's gonna come up, you know, this budget year, we're looking, what are the options if we have to have as many students in preschools, awesome. And it could be that they're gonna need, you know, one reason why our budget to do that.
Well, and, and I guess just adding to that, why is it good for us to have more kids in preschool, right? We can recognize disabilities earlier, we get all of the students socialized earlier, right? It's better, I mean, Mary can probably talk about this at a level that I can't, but it's really beneficial for our district to have more spaces, which is why we have been subsidizing it. So we have to figure that out as our budget numbers change, where we have to put the money and if we have money for this or not.
And I appreciate what Allison said, because I think we're gonna have to be creative. We could have, with money, that's money. And, you know, it's, the question is, you know, we'll, you know, exactly what our families, some of those are things we gotta, we need to look at. But one thing is you're not gonna make everybody please everybody, but, you know, we do have the capacity to do that at Smiley. So that, that answers your question. We have, you know, more staff and we're.
Could, there be a scenario if even our, like, three-year-olds start at Smiley and that brings more capacity to some other firms? We, four-years-old, we go to your school that will eventually be your kindergarten. I don't know, it's a solid open.
I think we're gonna need to be, we're gonna wanna get creative.
I have something, I don't know if this is even possible, but I think there would be an out, say, if it was a choice between no pre-K option at the school and families contribute something, I think that there might be an interest from how to contribute, because they're gonna be paying your parents or people elsewhere. So they don't have to do some sort of, hard publicly funded and hard privately funded, but those families are gonna have to pay for that some way or another. And it seems like if we can get them into the school, it's just a lot of, I mean, create kind of way.
So.
Something to think about. All right, Mary, the floor is yours again.
So just to wrap up the pre-K conversation, just looking at the numbers, we had a hundred, we have a hundred and twenty-six students in the public pre-K and a hundred and eighty students in the private, which is our partner programs. So that's a total of three hundred and six preschool-age students within our district that are accessing one sixty-six, either through public or private. Okay, last slide. So what I wanted to do is just, just to summarize, just to look back at what we've been working on over the last three years. So as I mentioned earlier, we've done a lot of literacy, professional development, really looking at the science of reading and developmentally, how students learn how to read. So we have worked really hard on our curriculum to get that aligned. We've also had seventeen of our special educators trained in Orton-Gillingham. And we have some classroom teachers as well that have been trained. I don't have the exact number for classroom teachers, but there's definitely interest in that approach, which is wonderful. As I mentioned earlier, we've done lots of work to build our multi-tiered systems of support and we will continue to be working on that over the next several years. For special education, we took two of our special educators two years ago and we have them as district evaluators now. And what that means is they are the two people who have expertise in the evaluation process. And so they run that process, which has freed our other special educators up to spend more time with instruction with students. To spend more time with instruction with students. This year we have um, special services coordinator. So when Blythe was retiring. We took her position as the assistant director. And decided um, to use that position differently. And so we have a coordinator for the north end, a coordinator for the south end. And um, the person who has been doing our out of district. Placement, um, case management is acting as a part-time coordinator um, at the high school. And so they really can work alongside the special educators with implementing the rule changes. With supporting people, acting as the local education um. Authority in IEP meetings. So that's been really nice. We, this year we have a special ed coach, um, because we have so many new special educators. Um, so we have people who've just graduated from a program. Or we have people who are on provisional licenses. And what that means is. They um, are going through a program now to either become a teacher. Or to add a special ed endorsement onto their license. We've done training in the special ed rules um, over the last few years. We continue to do professional development around universal design for learning. We were in um, compliance monitoring um, last year. And so we met all of our requirements. And so um, our uh. Monitoring has been closed for this year and next year we'll move back into cyclic monitoring. So that's good news. And then pre-K, the focus the last couple of years has just been around coordinating the schedules, the programming. We did add a classroom to UID last year so we could serve more students. We have done a lot of professional development with our staff in pre-K around early literacy, early math. Nature-based learning and then focusing on social emotional learning. Um, which is the early MTSS for pre-K. So it's been busy and um, we're gonna just continue with this. And um, fine tuning some things. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have.
It looks like you answered our questions as we went along, which it would have been a lot to wait. So thank you for doing that. Um, and thank you for that um, information. It's a lot of information.
Okay. Well, if anybody does have any questions, feel free to reach out, uh, let John know and. I will um, see you all soon.
Thank you so much, baby.
Bye.
Okay, so we have a monitoring report to review next. Can I get a motion to accept the monitoring report? And a second please. Thanks Heather. Um, any discussion on the monitoring report? John, do you wanna?
Um, just wanted to. Say a couple, because there's a lot of information. Hopefully, you know, until we spent some time digging, thinking about it over, you know, more than a couple of weeks. Um, but I did want to tell you where this came. Because there's a lot, we have new people on the board that probably, one point to come. Um, uh, Susan remembers some of this work. She was part of our committee that worked on. Creating, uh, outreach and taking a look at, I don't know, either surveys we got back. And a ton of other types of feedback. And this was an area that the community really wanted us. This was civics, being good citizens, knowing about their community. So that was the genesis. And so this is one of the first times that we've gone through this particular ends. Try to that is because it would really approve it, I think in two thousand eighteen, the final version. Then we did some reporting on um, some of the executive limitations. And then one point one, which we did twice. And then COVID. Where we had to like table some of these. So this is, this is our. One of the, we've done a little bit on the edges of this, but this is one of the first goal reports. We, I think, I would say, um. Exactly, I think we've done a lot of work on this over the last ten years really. And I do think that we're making progress towards meeting this ends. Our schools do a lot about, not just school based, but going out into the community. And understanding, you know, how government in some ways. And then just our, you know, what is a good citizen, what do they do? What does it mean? And we offered some examples of that pre-K four. It's not an exhaustive list. Um, so we just wanted to give you like a sampling of some of the things that we're doing, not just in school, but out in the community. Um, to be good citizens, to be effective engaged citizens. Um, and also what I would begin is we took a look at all of our units. All the units across our elementary schools that are connected to this. Um, ends and we took a look at the summative of the assessments and how the kids to. We, so we combined all the schools together and the units that were linked to that. Then we did the same thing for the middle schools. But um. Tradition rates are a little bit different. Uh, and you know, I'd wanna dig in and see why, but. It gets a little bit more complex. Some of the assessments as kids meticulously through, but. Those are, you know, pretty solid. Um, percentages like to see them a little higher in fifth and sixth grade. Um, we're gonna dig into that a little bit more. And then if one of, um, one, one of our big priorities is graduating students. They're effective engaged citizens. You can see that all over this building. Um, and some shirts that have it on the back. Um, and then what the high school has done. Taking a look at some of the common core standards is creating proficiencies that focus on civics. And community, um, and being not just a state and a national community member. But local community member, what that looks like. So what we did here is something similar or tried to do something similar to that. Um. Mike helps me link the proficiency to the actual units. And uh, so that you could see, you know, the linkage between. One, we're teaching students, what the courses are and the proficiencies, then how students are doing. Um, so. Mike, uh, we dug into some, um, some information, you know, really the last couple of years. But about ninety percent of the students meeting proficiency when they should. So if it's when you're sophomore in a particular course, we have about ninety percent of students that need it when they should. Does that make sense? Um, and then you have to meet the, the, these proficiencies. Uh, that, that they that are listed here before you can graduate. So essentially what that means is that um, you can't graduate unless. These proficiencies. So the last two years going back, we were ninety-eight, like six percent. Um, which is the highest graduation rate I know. I only two deployments here and um, and then ninety-six percent this year. So what that tells the community and the board is that. Particularly in that, when you look at this ends, that, you know, we have a high percentage of our kids. That are meeting proficiencies that are really directly related to the, to the one, two. Um, then also there's, we have a community service component. We had to put on pause or then. Talk about that in here as well. And we've, that, you know, that's why I am, that's being reintroduced as we speak. And then just the clubs and the other activities that we have, including advisory that are, which is think. Directly linked to one. Um, then I give you some examples in here about some of the topics. Um, that help students be one measure of the proficiency that some of these proficiencies, but also. How it's linked to being not just a good local citizen, but a good goals. Um, and then the last part I shared, it was just more data that I thought you might. Might be helpful in showing we're making progress towards meeting this ends, but um. You're, how many students are going into some sort of full second, secondary education? So that could be two-year, four-year or certificate training program. That's a pretty high percentage comparatively in Vermont. You know, probably twenty percent is a little bit more higher than the state average of students that are going into work. And um, students that are going into full-time military service. Military has always been, you know, as long as I've been here, it's been relatively low. Low sign, well, we haven't tracked, but I think we could. Um, possibly, I don't know how accurate, but, but we have a lot more students going to the serves. Or, or into the guards compared to that as out of place, almost right. We're, we're training for years. So, again, I say. With quite a bit of confidence that we've made a lot of progress on this post-COVID. And we're getting regenerated, generated energized, um. As we're exiting, you know, the pandemic, obviously COVID is still here. But um, just doing more outreach to the community. That we've been. Questions. Try and put together comprehensive reports that coming.
In my opinion, this is the meat of why we're here and what we're doing. So I'd rather table something later in the agenda. Folks are worried about this meeting going long than gloss over this. So please don't hesitate to attempt that.
How do the students prove their profession?
Well, there's, there are many, you know, a bunch of different ways. You know, doing some of the actual activities, but also reinforcement. Showing that they understand certain, certain pieces around being. About around civics and local government. What is your local community? So part of it is them, you know, in an academic way, being able to respond. So to the, some of the coursework and proficiencies that are involved. So it's a combination of both. You know, the actual sort of physical things and then academic.
Is it something that they're great about or is this one of the competency based areas?
They're great, they're, this is, you know, these are, they're great owners as well.
Um, it's just to, just to add to that, they, they do both. Right? There are grades and competencies. And so we keep both of those at the high school. So, um. The answer is yes, right? Sometimes it's a grade, sometimes it's a proficiency, but everything is. Sometimes they're the same. You can get a proficiency and a grade on that same side.
So, so they have, you know, they have to provide evidence and then they're assessed.
But it's part of like the core curriculum. I mean.
Yes.
Like a national admire, they're a core curriculum. So they're being assessed on something that is built in.
Um, Kevin, you have a question?
Um. Second one, so yeah, right. So, can I? I have a, uh, it's my under daughter's question. I got a lot of. Writing orientation letter that describes PGRs and all, send that to the board to kind of. See what a parent would get, helps to kind of learn. And our district has uh. Flexibility to create our, our own performance based uh, graduation policy. They're not. Mandating it from, from online. You have to learn your own. Some of the ones that would have to write your tie to this sense policy. So, like, you know, this, this report kind of. Literally made me smile when I read it. Um, it was like. It was, it was easy to see how our district interprets that higher level policy. And, you know, seeing lots of evidence in terms of how district is reading that interpretation. So it was very well done. Not, not to stress that, the, all of this was being done before we had a policy written. Um, so, and then we've been able to reinforce, I think, this, uh, this work with the policy, right? So we have a policy and the stuff that's going to be, you can see like very clearly that district is. You wanna call it on the citizenry and community, so. I even, I didn't ask you this earlier today, but is there anything that I've seen? That leads to, where is it going? Are there, are there areas either where the policy needs to be adapted? Are there programs that you envision of changing in the future as we're coming out of? You know, the COVID getting more into the, more engagement with community? Um, is that one question? And. Mine, what I personally interpret all. Serve participate in the community. I, I hope that out of it. You, you create such a strong bond relationship with our communities that our kids wanna come back, right? And stay in our district. And um, if there was any way to measure that. Um, I think it would help. To kind of close the loop even more with what I think we're trying to get out of this, this policy, which is to. Create a sense of. So. I've been on, I mean, I would recommend changing this. In the next couple of years. Um, the, the ZENS, but I, you know, I think, um, so that would be my recommendation now. Because I think one of the things I wanted to do is go through this cycle. And get some of the feedback and we've seen some of our other monitoring reports, you know, we build on. So the feedback that we get makes the reports better down the road. And right now, um, then what's also beneficial about this is. Just Mr. Weston and I re, you know, engaging about this and talking about. Where we were with proficiencies five years ago. The work that we did around creating the Zen's policy, how it has informed the proficiencies. And then right now, what everyone. Mount Mansfield was doing is relooking at all of their proficiencies, including these. And talking about the log locations that can make. So let's take one thing, let's take one thing from our changing. Well, they'll use this as, as a really good North Star. And um, so right now, you asked about things that are going on or are going. And they're relooking at the proficiencies now to make sure that, you know, there's a, that it's matching what students' needs are. Number one, and you know, obviously the family's aspirations are for the children, including. Well, so that's where it's happening, you know, really right now. We'll probably roll something else in, you know, next year that we'll share more to about the revisions that we be. This has been good, been really positive because it has been, I call it, you know, sort of a North Star. For our, our district and really reinforce that effective engaged citizen. Uh, and what is it, what is that, what's the death, what is that? We're, we're part of one. Is in this.
Other questions or comments? I have a couple of comments. Um. One of them is based a little bit on what you were saying is that we were doing it in our schools before we had the policy. But the policy came out of the values of our community, right? So we wrote down what our community values. And so we were doing it here because it's valued in our community. We wrote it down because it's valued in our community. And we're reinforcing it by measuring it and it retains that value. And I think that's um. Just an important piece to kind of remind ourselves, you know, if we, if we choose at some point. At some point to say this is not something we want to spend a lot of time thinking about, then we would have a different. Policy and it could mean that our schools drift away first, or it could be that our board says. We need to focus on other things, right? Like it could so, but just wanted to say that. Um, wanted to ask. I know you said a sampling of the elementary schools, but do you mind that? That schools, obviously they're going to do this differently, but that some have a more robust. Um, dedication to.
Self. Not the elementary. Think they're pretty unfair.
Okay.
What I look after, but I say that this is conjecture. You know, the middle schools doing things a little differently, so. You know, I think there's more differences there than there are in elementary schools. Kids love to get out. Students love to yell or talk to people, you know. If you've ever in preschool seen what uh. You know, the preschool Richmond has done, playing in the gardens and the fur, I mean, that's just like one example. But those are, those are the things they're doing all this time. We're having senior lunches and where people can and they interact. Uh, visiting the town office, they do that, but I'm saying, but the middle schools do it.
Thank you. Last column. Um, then let's um take a vote. Uh, all in favor of accepting the monitoring policy for N S one point two citizenry and community. Uh, give me a thumb or say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, John.
Um, Edie, can I say two things?
Yes.
Of your agreement. One, um, we shared a lot of them, backtracked a little bit, which I don't like to do, although we know what's moving. I appreciate that so much, but you're eating.
Go ahead, John.
I mean. Appreciate a lot. We shared a lot of information, especially. If it's too much. Give us that back, okay? Uh, I just, you know, I felt like people were really interested in it, wanted to know it. But it's got to be usable though. Right? So you give ED or me, I've never taken stuff personally. Um. Yeah, you can say, John, we could have cut that in half or. You know, maybe I'm not as interested in these pieces. That is a great feedback for, so please, you know, just, I would say just share that. Or you can do what we can happen. The other thing, just a quick shout out to the teachers. Our staff, I mean, you can see that among us, she was huge, sea change. And our staff are just prepared for. And dug in and worked and tried new things, which is not easy. But I'm just so thankful and proud to work with people that are back committed to students. Or that might not come out in the presentation, but telling it's been very impressive.
Thank you. Um, so my question is, do we want to table the leadership summit debrief to the next meeting or do we want to have a shorter chat about it tonight? I can go either way. All right, let's start with a shorter chat tonight, and if we need to have more time later, we can do one. Since got so much. Um, response on that one. So. Um, for those of you who were there, I just want to share that only thirteen people answered the survey. Um, that was sent out. Survey was pretty general and easy. Um, but. Only thirteen of, how many did we have there? Like thirty people, John? Yeah, about.
Yep, yep.
Um, so less than half. Um, and over ninety percent were satisfied or. Better with the training overall and um eighty percent said. You know, needs improvement on it. So in general, very positive. Folks felt like they got a lot out of it. That filled out the survey, right? So I just want to say like, I would love to do this annually. I think this is something that's going to be really important for us to keep. Meeting in this kind of a way, but I want, want to know how to make it better. Um, you know, icebreaker, book discussion, and then. Um, direction alignment commitment were the three categories and just kind of. Any feedback that you have would be. Really helpful. Yeah, one. Uh, going into it, I think we have been helpful knowing a little more. Process behind, like I can, for me, I was like, we got the book and I was like. You have to read this book. And I started reading this book and I was like, what are we changing our curriculum? I have a bit of it's like why like. An idea of like. Everybody's reading this book and why we want to read the book and what is that? I would want. As opposed to just, here's a book read and we're in. Talk about it, which we do. Great. Maybe even breaking down the parts, the. The book that are most applicable to this group, right, or suggested chapters. Yeah, because there were parts that were more applicable to the board and less applicable to the board. Yep.
Maybe an article being a little bit.
An article rather than a book for future. Yeah, I mean, and there were, there were lots of. I mean, even for this book, there were lots of resources. There were. Education podcasts, we'd interview the author, there were. Like. Edie had done an interview with her, so. For people who need smaller bites, those resources. That's good. Yeah. Saw a lot of heads down in that one, so.
I got, uh, I thought of one slight service purpose to get the discussion going. It's kind of challenging to find. Something to do that's going to get discussion. Know people, I also feel relevant to everybody's job. I kind of got the point of it after the whole thing was done. So that like it would have been like, now I get it, like, it's really just. You know, the relative, technically relevant book, but also just. And, you know, I wasn't really sure where the the discussion was going to go with. District priorities. But, you know, just at least at our table, spent. A lot, like more time than I've ever spent going through what those characters and they use a very least people. It was really interesting to hear. How, you know. How they're represented and people's. Day daily job as a board, so. We overall was really good first going. Better. Better than I thought it's been. Oh, it's a really good. I would like to. There's a lot of, just a couple of people. And no thanks to Dale or Ethan, as we call it, that day, but uh, it would have made it have a little bit more of just. During during the.
Yeah, there was a um. Conscious decision for the first time we did it to do that, but yeah, that was. One of the discussions that we had, do we mix it up in the middle or do we keep people in there saying stronger? So. Okay.
I like saying in the group, I have, I felt like I got to know some people I didn't know before and get a bit broken up. I wonder about them. And as a bit of a feeling for who they were as educators and what I was going through, I feel they were thinking so. That part was okay. I I had a hard time with the book. Um, I don't think. As a sort of literature, a lot of them possibly are fully charred word her. And so I kind of felt as though particularly the second half of the book, um, whatever. Was not helpful to me at all. So it's asking your time again. I think finding some articles more important, past specific chapters out of a book that that are. Relevant or more normal on discussion with the vehicle or whatever.
More school leadership, less curriculum.
True. Just to build on on that. I was setting when I went through, I was living in lines of space by the college. But it was probably the right round of time to start with. Small. But now I feel like I'm selling it really rough. And there's other people that I couldn't even figure out what they did that one of the records. If you'll make a gesture, so.
Yeah, Alice.
I think we probably need time under board. With, I love having a staff, but I love getting to know them. It was such a treat and you're so talented and interesting. And this may be a function of the fact that I was in the room over at my table, but I think we do need some times of board. To talk about things that are different than the things that we can talk about with staff. That's a good use of their time, that's like relevant and appropriate to talk about with them. They feel like we've been making some progress on some like interpersonal dynamics on the board and. Working through some of our strategic issues well together. Um, but I think that there's still a need to to build in that area. So I was a supplemental, a second retreat, um. But that would be my my wish, just to also have. Board time, not because they, I like I said, love having them there so badly. Not necessarily great, it's their time, couldn't be present, even work through. You know, some of the things that are going to get us aligned.
Yeah, but maybe um March, as the board turns over to have a. Second meeting in March is that cohesive building.
Yeah, although I think if there's a lot of new members, that might be a little much from your personal ownership. Like, you know what I mean?
Yep.
It's like, I don't know anything and then we're talking about. We have some next level stuff.
Yeah, I feel like it's overwhelming enough joining a board, but along joining a board and jumping into a retreat.
I was thinking more on the gift knowing level.
Oh, it's true.
Yes, like just to have that opportunity to build a cohesive board.
Yeah, yeah, um, that's right. Yeah, yeah.
Pick a small. Um, folks online, anyone? I'm turning my attention to your direction. Yes, Ethan.
Uh, I thought it was great. Definitely an opportunity to get to know folks. Um, I just guess maybe a question about. My my sense is there was some hope, uh, maybe for former board members around. Sort of helping to shape the ongoing district. Well. I recognize that um, we sort of acknowledge that we shouldn't change priorities. Without letting them, you know, kind of carry out, but what's the process ongoing for influencing potential changes? Around the district priorities and are those still aligned, both at the administrative level? And at the board level? I guess that'd be my only question is, how will that follow up after this meeting?
Yeah, so what is the process for building district priorities in the future? As these need to be much, be much.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, Katie, I just also want to return to the book. I just want to share that. Even though there were parts that were more applicable to us and parts that are more applicable to. Curriculum design and development, I think, um, for me, I felt so enlightened to be reading something. And proud to be reading something that all of the um administration was reading, sort of is a is an overall. Broad theme towards. Progress that a lot of people in our community still really want to hear about and know is happening in our schools. And so reading this book, I felt empowered me to be able to talk with our community and say. Like, this is a real highlight of the work that we're doing, whether it was actually like. Applicable to my daily work as a board member. And I think that that's really important and a important lens for us to have when we have any of. That we need to participate in the broader learning of the administration.
No, thank you. This, I think it'd be good to have the book that everybody's reading, but maybe there's only two chapters or something we could discuss at an actual retreat. That way we'd have the opportunity to see what everybody else is reading and there's chances of things. Not having.
Great.
Also think it would be helpful if there was more. Or shared right now, not like without moving, but. Here's this committee we just created. How do we support you in the work you're doing in the classroom? I feel like. We had a fourth second introduction. And I don't know if everyone in that room understood what our mission committee do to support their work.
Just writing.
I think I could help with that too, just like. Um, I won't finish some of that. I mean, that's a great idea. Cause. There's a lot of committees are. Probably all. Supporting the work that talked about tonight, and we've worked with everyone. Make sure I include that too.
Yeah, I think it came up a lot at our table as we were going through the book discussion. We'd come upon a point, I'd be like. Well, here's what this committee does. I need to hear from you more about how we want to be supportive. Like, how can we? How can we be further? I mean, working with classrooms, knowing that we just read this book. Um, because right, I hear. Teachers are are. Right, they're stretched thin, they're intimidated by changing any kind of curriculum that has to do. Do you any work? And. All I can say is, well, how do I support you? Where do you need to be the most?
Great. All right, I said I do this as brief. So and we're we're still, we're close to.
So, well done.
Yeah, I do. I mean, I think every, I have not gotten any feedback that folks did not find it valuable. If you didn't, if you want to talk online, let me know because we want. All of the time we spend to be really valuable. Might not be every minute valuable, but we want. General thoughts of value. Okay, um, thank you for judging me. Uh, meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on the twenty first of August? Thank you, Kevin. One second. Good. Thank you, Lisa. Uh, any discussion on the minutes?
No, Mr. Huang called me around a meeting, but I didn't, I didn't know he was that show. And last name was. Whatever his name. From the birth of me, I'm sorry.
Thank you. We can fix that.
Why have her name in there, frankly?
Thank you. Eric, if you see your face, is something you want to add? Is that no? Okay. Um, any other discussion on the minutes?
We we didn't have a huge attendance at the meeting and there was some. With some, there's some. Uh, previewed or used or. For anyone that wasn't in the meeting. Watched the recording or move the minutes.
Um, yeah, and just for future for folks watching, um. Watching meetings, if you're not seeing something on the actual screen, it is attached to the agenda. And so you can always pull that up and follow along. The last meeting, there were some things, and in this meeting too, there were some things that were on screen. And some things that weren't, but it's always attached to the agenda. So you can have access to that before the meeting and during the meeting. Call. Call out. Um. All in favor of approving the minutes? Thumbs up, aye?
Aye.
I'm seeing second. Any opposed? Abstentions?
I'm standing as well.
So Allison, Andrew, Katie. And Susan are abstaining. Yep. I'm also abstaining, but I don't vote, so. Is there enough of that?
Abstentions.
Abstentions don't count against, so it's still unanimous.
I'm doing something new.
My next comment on attendance, that meeting was. My next comment on attendance, that meeting was in conflict. It was all of our original schedule, so I haven't, unless one remaining. So when we're making the annual schedule, um,
Yep.
It's almost going to be a concern for you.
Well, and it was, I mean, all these meetings are always hard, right? So that was, that's the discussion that we need to have about reading attendance. And if you can't make it, if you're not going to make it, letting us know as far in advance as you can. Then us would be me, Tara, John and Andrew. Um, Jones, so that, because sometimes John is at the meeting, sometimes Andrew will be at the meeting for the year. So just give us the heads up. That would be really helpful. Um, so we know when we're not going to have. I think that's all I have to say. Okay, um, committee reports, I think we're only going to do D E I B. Yes, because none of the other committees met since the last meeting.
I didn't meet. Can, can we say something for me?
Yes, we're going to do both community engagement and D E I B.
You go first.
My notes aren't represented there. So I don't know, Sean, if those, like, do you change it in the agenda? Well, it normally does get attached to the agenda. If it didn't, and you just want to give us a heads up or if you want to wait till the next meeting, you can just wait until the next meeting.
Right. Dude, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what happened there.
The notes that are like here are from our June meeting. We met on August sixteenth and those meeting notes.
Did, uh, did, uh, Jenna get those?
Yeah.
I'm gonna make sure they're attached. I've got some of them. But I wouldn't follow up.
Um, yeah, so we met, we started to discuss an action plan, particularly around a training at the September twenty sixth meeting. Dr. Brown is not available for that, um, because we shifted to the Tuesday night that week. Um, here it hasn't come in. And so Andrew confirmed that cat, yeah. You forget, you, you would be able to come and do some, like an hour long I D training with the board to start doing this own selling work with ourselves or the school board. Um, so that's going to be the twenty sixth. We're discussing creating a district putting policy. I had put that come a couple of times at our school during the retreat around how should we choose with appeals supported, if we need a district putting policy. Wrong. Then that's the you know, people stand behind, right? They could make adjustments in their classrooms and they knew the board of the district versus. So that's, that's steps, knowing we can get a lot of law in the V S D A. Um, and then work through our own. And Andrew Bayless and staff for doing that, it was not something I have been involved with much on the board or anywhere else that we moved from there. Um, so that's, that's our next step. We'll meet again at the end of this month after the twenty sixth. So we'll have that twenty sixth meeting and cat will be there and the D E I B video will be given. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, um, I just wanted to say that I sent out a doodle poll in order to get a date on the calendar for a meeting and it appears to have the wrong times, but when I look, it's right times. So, oh, that was funny. Since we don't have a leadership meeting on the morning of the eighteenth, it just, I'll be following up with everybody to see if we can make that work eight to nine on Monday, the eighteenth. Thank you. Okay. Um, and I just want to add on the V S D A, um, the regional meeting was last week. Um, there was an in-depth P C B update at that. Um, it should have been recorded and it should be available for everyone to watch. Um, I haven't looked at the V S D A website, but I highly recommend that folks dig in there. Um, and we can talk about it more, um, at a future meeting for folks who, um, are concerned or have interest or want to dig in deeper on what's going on with P C Bs and schools in the state. Entry for to the note you sent us this summer. Yeah, and about the, um, class action lawsuit that we are a part of. So that was in there as well. Um, any other business?
Can you talk about them? Do you want to put some?
Yes.
But.
Thank you. On the twenty sixth of October, is that the right date? Kevin, I don't. Twenty sixth, twenty seventh or twenty fifth or twenty sixth?
Twenty sixth, twenty seventh.
Twenty sixth and twenty seventh of October at Lake Maori is the annual conference for the V S D A. Um, if you can make it, that would be great. If you can go for one day, that's fine. If you want to go and stay overnight, the district covers your costs to do that. Um, if you want to go just for the business meeting, that portion, I believe, is also done remotely. So you can do just that piece remotely. Um, highly recommend it. It's, um, Katie and I went last year. And there was just a lot of really good information and good networking with other boards. So, um, especially for, uh, regional collaboration and other kind of committee work, um, it can be really helpful. Um, once you register, reach out to John and let him know that you've registered and, um, they take care of groups to it. But you still have to do your own registration.
So does.
Any other, other business? I wrote down two things, but I don't have my readers. Let's see what I wrote down. Um, does it, if anybody has feedback on the end of the year procedure on the Juneteenth, um, not having for John, that was discussed at the last meeting. So make sure that, um, you get that to John for that procedure so that we can add something for future. Um, I already said the other thing that I had. Um, next meeting is on a Tuesday. It's Tuesday, the twenty sixth because of, um, young form. And it will be, um, half training and half executive session. So it will be a whole meeting. So just want to give everyone that heads up. Um, anything else? That's all we have. Thank you, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mm-hmm.
Second, thank Heather. All right. Have a good evening, everyone. Hope by leaving. Thank you so much for being here.